Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, it's seven thirty, so hurry up.
I'm Ronnie.
All right. All right, good evening, if we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. First item, reporter, the chairman, I'd like to acknowledge and notify everybody of a donation that the Massey received from the Weller Foundation for three hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety cents. These funds were requested by the Child Development Course to purchase thirty books. So, has the money come in yet?
The money's here. Jamie's here, going to present the book that she'd like to purchase for the-
Great.
For tonight, so when we get down to-
Oh, is it down further? Okay.
We're talking a little bit about the book, it was presented to Curriculum Council. But Jamie got a grant and-
Great.
The cost of this book will be covered.
Perfect. Great. Other thing I want to mention, under reporter, the chairman, there's been some chatter out there about Chalk Hill and the Board of Education having a plan called Scenario X that we're going to close Benroel and Stepney Elementary School and move into Chalk Hill, so I just wanted to clear that confusion up on this chatter that we're hearing. That is not true. We have no plan now or in the future to do that scenario. So, I don't know, John, if you've gotten any calls from parents?
Not yet, we did have some, we heard some discussion about that. We did look at a Scenario X last year because a citizen talked about it.
Right.
But when we looked at it, there was not enough space to fit all the kids.
Correct. Which is why we dismissed that.
Why we dismissed it.
Because there's not enough space in Chalk Hill to close those schools and move everybody into that campus. So, I just wanted to clear that up so that we are not getting phone calls from citizens and town people and parents flipping out that they think these two schools are being closed down by us. That is not something that we are considering, that is not something we're moving forward with. We did that ad hoc committee. What it, where we studied all those, our buildings, for the, for three years we did that, and made a decision based on that to continue with the the current configuration that we have now, and that is what we're going to move forward with unless we decide that somewhere down the road. But I don't see that happening, given the amount of money it would take to renovate Chalk Hill into a like-new status for us to use it as a school, and our population would need to significantly decrease to be able to close down two elementary schools, which is not something that even our, our study-
It's not our radar.
Our, you know, enrollment study is showing, it's showing that we're going to start increasing, so that's just going to, you know, make space, we need more space, you know, not less.
And that study and all the scenarios are on the website-
Right.
Under Rule Twenty-Seven, under Board of Education. So, you can see the study that's been done and all the scenarios, so.
All right. Yes, Alan?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, there's, I just really want to emphasize that three-year study that we did because there's chatter through social media outlets that the town should do a feasibility study. But we already did one, and yeah.
And actually, they did all the buildings from the town and the Board of Education, so we really have spent the money in it, and we've done that three years.
Right.
There was also an update, too, correct, on the demographics? On the demographics, isn't it?
Yeah. So, hopefully, we've, we've cleared that up at this meeting, and anybody who's concerned about that is watching or paying attention and understands that that's not something that we're considering.
Right, absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely. Great, thank you. We will move on then to the consent addenda, do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Jerry, second Carlos. John, do you want to talk about our retirements?
Right, so we did put out the retirement incentive, and we had seven people who took the incentive, which is going to save, and will know exactly what it's going to save us around budget time, we're still working on the numbers, but it does save us quite a bit of money. Three other people are retiring, but not with that incentive. So, these are all veteran staff members who have been with us for, you know, over thirty years, worked really hard and done a great job in the classroom, so we are going to miss them. But, you know, people know when it's time.
Great, any questions on that? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, first up is our Massey board reps.
So, this week, in honor of Veterans Day, we'll be having some festivities going on at Massey. We have a substitute teacher, Mr. Sheen, is a Korean War veteran, and there's going to be an interview conducted with him and shown to all the students where they'll kind of see a little, I don't really know exactly what it's about, but I'll find out, a little more about what a veteran is, like what it really means. And then, on Friday, in the library, there will be other war veterans just around talking to people. This month's, this student, this month's student of the month are Greg Miller and Brianna Malloy, and they'll be honored in the library Friday morning. Robotics has their first tournament this coming Saturday at Danbury High School. And our in-school musical preview will be next Tuesday, the fourteenth, in school, it's Once Upon a Mattress. There will be showings Friday at seven-thirty and Saturday at two o'clock and seven-thirty. We're working on getting tickets for all of you. That's next Friday, Saturday, Thursday.
I'm also very sad to report that we don't have school tomorrow. Everyone's kind of depressed about that, it is Election Day. So, Thursday, we also have a half-day or an early dismissal for parent-teacher conferences, which are five-thirty and end at around eight. Also, on Thursday of next week, we have a career day where various people from different career paths come and the students get to kind of get a sense of what it's like to be in the actual world post-college or post-high school. Also, DECA, I have to mention DECA, or I'd hear something from Ms. Kliney, is holding a food or item drive for Homes for the Brave, which is in Bridgeport, Connecticut. I went there during my capstone and we served refreshments to them, and it's really, it's really nice to get that feeling that you're giving back to somebody who sacrificed so much for your country and your ability to have opportunities like capstone and things like that. So, please, if you have any items or food items, we're making a list right now of what they need, and it'd be great if you could donate.
This Wednesday at Massey, there is the underage drinking forum for parents and students, and it's for freshmen only. And I went through it two years ago, and I found it very informative, and it's a good presentation, and almost, and all freshmen are required to go, so that's good. And then, next Wednesday, there are the underclassmen picture retakes. And then, finally, in athletic news, the Unified Sports Soccer Team had their final end-of-the-season tournament at Staples today, and it was a success, so.
Great, thank you so much. Does anybody else have reports? Alan?
Finance Committee, Matt. And Mrs. DeBlasey gave us an insurance update. It's starting to, right now, we have about five hundred thousand banked, and insurance is showing some signs that it's stabilizing a little bit. Stepney roof was discussed, and no leaks after that big rainstorm, so everything's looking good, the area's cleared up. And administrators, school administrators and staff are currently working on the budget, putting it together.
Great, thank you. Carlos, did you have a report?
Representative Council met this past Thursday, and it was a fairly short meeting. Obviously, everybody reports kind of on what, how the schools are doing down at CES. Everything's running as smooth as it can be, and the only sad news that we received, well, prior to that, we did, CES did have an audit conducted this past, and they, everything was great, they're in the black, so they're not in the red, so they're doing well, and everything's accounted for. The sad news was that the executive director, former superintendent of Newtown, who's the executive director now at CES for many years, is retiring.
Evan?
So, June, Evan Pickoff, so June two thousand and eighteen will be his last month with CES. So, that, there's, they're doing their own search now, beginning this holiday season, right after New Year, so.
Great. Anybody else have reports? All right, hearing none, we will move on to public participation, if anybody would like to speak.
Good evening, my name is Dan Hunsberger. As you know, I've been the Town Council's liaison to the Board of Education. As you also know, there's an election tomorrow, and as I'm not a candidate for Town Council, tonight is my last meeting as your liaison. First, I want to thank you for making me feel welcome and comfortable attending the meetings, and I'm especially appreciative of the information that I've gotten and received as a member of Town Council that I've been able to share with Town Council. Second, I don't think the average citizen understands the work you do, and I certainly didn't until I came. I never realized how much time and effort and certainly dedication it was required. Just as important, I never realized the commitment of our teachers or administrators have in making Monroe Schools better. I never realized the effort that goes into the administration's evaluations of current and prospective programs and student curriculum. Finally, over the last few months, I've come to realize what an asset Superintendent Batista is and Assistant Superintendent Zamera has been for Monroe during the years they've served. And no matter the outcome tomorrow, the first selectman will have nothing to worry about as far as the Board of Education is concerned. And please, in your search for a new superintendent, I hope you find someone as dedicated as they are.
Thank you.
And one other comment, in answer to your concerns, I'm not aware of anyone on Town Council that has spread that rumor concerning the schools. I think Town Council has considered what has, what you have looked at, and there is no proposal coming from Town Council as far as Plan X or anything else is concerned, so.
Great, thank you.
I think there's a great deal of confidence, at least I, I believe there's a great deal of confidence in the Board of Ed from those of us that have served on Town Council. And again, thank you, and I appreciate everything you've done.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Anybody else? All right. We will move on to our report of our superintendent.
Thank you, Donna. One of the agenda items that has been on every agenda has been the budget, so just a quick update on it. The governor, as we all know, signed the budget. It's a two-year budget, so we do have some idea of what our ECS money will be for the following year, this year and next year, so that helps. Donna, Jack, Gabby and I met with Town Council, Board of Finance members this week, and some members from the town, just to talk about the contingency that was put in the budget, and we had a really productive meeting. I think there was a lot of discussion about what, what we're looking for, if it was possible to get some of the money back. So, we talked to them about it, we talked to them about technology was important to us because we have put our, our technology upgrades, that plan that we have, so that we can refresh our technology, put it on hold because we didn't have the money this year, and I think that they're aware of that and really comfortable that we're doing the right thing by not waiting and saying, we need a huge amount of money to refresh, we're going to refresh a little every year, so we put that on. We also talked about the K-five coordinators, which I've talked about here before. We are not looking for three, English Language Arts, Math and Science. We, Sheila Casinelli, who's our Director of Curriculum, will work with the K-five English Language Arts. So, we're looking at the K-five math and the K-five science, especially with the next-generation science standards coming in play. So, we talked about that, about the possibility of using some of the contingency money for that. It'll only be a half a year this year because, you know, we won't start until January. But we will make sure that no matter what happens, if that comes to play, that we will have a, a plan for a smooth transition from those teachers, because they're teaching third grade now, those teachers to whatever teacher goes into that classroom, there'll be overlap. The kids, the students are our main priority, so we're going to make sure that that transitions.
So, John, question, so Sheila, we're looking for her to possibly take over the Language Arts?
She, right, she will be the K-five, we'll just move the K-five coordination, English Language Arts, into her position as the K-12 Curriculum Director, and she'll work in that. She has a background in reading, that, she's certified in reading, so it's, it's a good fit. She's been working really hard with them this year, so we think it's, it would work.
K-12 for her?
No.
She's a K, she's K-12, coordination of all the curriculum, but she'll focus on the K-five English Language Arts as a part of her job, because we won't have a K-five English Language Arts coordinator. I mean, then that's, that was our plan. But again, what I said is that it has to go through the Board of Finance, they have to approve that, and it has to go to Town Council, and they have to prove the contingency. So, we do have some hurdles to go, Gabby, Jack and I will be at the meeting, the Board of Finance meeting, which I believe is now set for the fourteenth.
Fourteenth might set.
So, we will be there to talk about what we're asking to bring back. You know, some things we can't bring back, the summer institutes that we had that have been very successful. However, today we met, and we're going to put that in the budget for the following year, so there'll be something that you see, and you can make a decision when we bring the budget back. So, that is, that's the budget. The next thing, just a quick talk about, is tomorrow's Professional Development Day for our teachers. There's eighty-two different offerings throughout the day. Art and music is leaving the district to work with other art and music professionals in the state, so we're really happy about that, they're getting to work together. So much, so much of the time, if you're a elementary music person, you're really an island. You don't really, you have to wait until you get to the other elementary people, but now we're going to work with more people in the state, and they're going to get professional development that way, so we're kind of excited about that, and I know they're excited about that. Tomorrow, we're going to continue the EdCamp model that I talked about in the beginning of the year, where teachers really run the professional development, so we're going to do that in the afternoon from one to three. Teachers have sent in what offerings they'd like us to put on the board, and so people will go in as groups to, to talk about that. Again, I just want to let you know that one of the sessions that we had in August was, was a homework session. There were, I would say, thirty, forty people in that session. That, what happened, after they had that conversation for that forty-five minutes or an hour, it's branched off into, we have a subcommittee of the Curriculum Committee to talk about homework because teachers felt it was important. We have a parent rep on there, there's a board rep on there. So, this EdCamp model has saved us some money because we're not bringing outside speakers, but it's also really been very productive for the teachers, and we're, there's a lot of experts in our district, so we're going to use those experts, so that's where. One of the things that I talked about is the Southern Fairfield County Superintendents getting together and seeing what we can combine services. Well, this has kind of taken off in Connecticut. So, the, the Superintendents met, we have a Google app where we have listed all the things that we think we do every year. So, you know, we talked again about the fire extinguishers, we talked about, you know, the septic systems, we talked about tree trimming, all that stuff. But what's happened now is that the finance directors have gotten together. So, Gabby, you met with the finance directors last week?
No, about two, probably three, two Fridays ago. And we talked mostly about transportation, but this conversation also segued into consortiums with things like electricity, heating oil, and that type of stuff.
So, the finance directors got together and talked about it, and then the special ed directors are now getting together, and they're talking about transportation. As a matter of fact, we had a conversation with Kay this morning about maybe using EdConnection to transportation more than we use now because it will save us some money. So, I think what's happening, and at least in Southern Fairfield County, is we're all getting together and saying, look, we can get some economy of scale here and save some money, and we're going to try to do that. So, we're kind of excited about that, and, you know, there's a lot of people in the room, so that's where we're starting to branch off into little groups. So, that, that's something that we're, we're pretty pleased about. Science testing, Sheila wanted me to share with you that the U.S. Department of Education has approved Connecticut's waiver for science testing, so that means next year there'll be no tenth-grade science tests next year, so our students will not take that. There will be a fifth and eighth-grade pilot next-generation science assessment. We won't get any data from that, but we'll be part of the pilot, we don't have a choice, we'll be part of the pilot. And so that, for the following year, in two thousand and nineteen, there will be a fifth-grade next-generation science standard assessment, eighth grade, and then also an eleventh grade. So, instead of tenth grade, it'll be eleventh grade. So, science is moving forward that way. So, those are the things that I want to talk about. Jack's going to do a little presentation about the one-to-one pilot, a tech, computer pilot that we started at Massey, but I don't know if you have any questions about those other things?
Anybody have questions? All right, then, this will move in, Jack's up.
So, this is an update for the board. You might recall, last spring, we introduced a one-to-one pilot program with the American Studies class here at Massey High School, and that's been off and going. So, we want to get back to you and provide you some information. We've surveyed students, and this will be one of a multi-part series to keep you informed about how that program is going. So, just a quick refresher of who's in the pilots in American Studies class, in English and Social Studies class combined, so it's two periods during the day. We have two teachers, we're very fortunate to have Jamie Sherry, one of the teachers here with us tonight. Tracy Forstrom is English, Jamie is teaching Social Studies. And it's thirty-nine juniors in total that are within the class. So, this is the recent feedback that we received from students on what their impressions of the one-to-one program are. And just to refresh memories, one-to-one means that every student in the class has one device twenty-four-seven. They can use it in school, in American Studies, they can use it in any other class, they can take it home, do their homework on it. It's something available to them all the time. So, the first question we had was really the most important one, actually, it's the second one that's the most important one. This one is just about what devices did students choose? We have forty-five percent that chose a district Chromebook with insurance, and then we had about thirty-six percent that chose to bring their own technology, and then remaining eighteen percent chose a district Chromebook without insurance. And you might recall that we created a user agreement that if you chose insurance for fifty dollars, if there was breakage up to two times, the insurance would cover any breakage. If you didn't choose insurance, we had an à la carte pricing for breakage, and then the family would be billed. We've already had one of those, so, and the family did pay for the breakage, so that might contribute to higher insurance in the future, or more people buying into it anyway. But that has been working well overall. So, sixteen students with BYOT with insurance in our Chromebook, seventeen, and then six students with no insurance and a district Chromebook. So, this is the important question. From a student's perspective, do they believe that one, one-to-one is improving their learning? As you can see here, seventy-five point eight percent believe that it does have a positive impact on their learning, so that's really a significant percentage. Twenty-one point two percent believe that it neither improved nor detracted from their learning, and then another small fraction here believes that it detracts from their learning. So, good, honest appraisal, you can always count on high school students to give you the truth about their impressions. But the good news here is roughly three-quarters of the class believe that it is having a positive impact on their learning each day. Do you use your one-to-one device in other classes? And the majority here were in some of their other classes, fifty-seven percent, twelve percent in all. So, this slice here is some or all, so about two-thirds, and the remaining one-third is in none or never. This, this question we have to reword, it really isn't a good question. I, it's safe to assume that these two are the same here, so roughly a third are not using it in other classes at all. Two-thirds are using it some or all the time in their other classes. I use my device before, after school for homework. The blue is every day, so roughly a quarter of the students. The red is a third most days, once in a while is the orange, and never is the green. So, more than fifty percent are using it most or every day for homework outside of the school day. Things we've learned so far, about one-third of the students chose BYOT, which was a surprise to us. We figured if, we had new Chromebooks there, that that's what they would choose, but it was a good percentage of students that wanted to bring in their own. And I've been in the class a few times, there tend to be newer devices that the students are bringing in, good condition, work well, and it's, it's an interesting thing that we'll need to keep in mind as we consider other options moving into the future. We have had to make some Wi-Fi adjustments, one of the things we did last year is we have, on average, probably about a thousand cell phones that go onto our network every day in the high school. Students have discovered that it's cheaper to use Wi-Fi than mom and dad's cell plan, or their own cell plan. So, we have this flood of Wi-Fi appliances that are on the device, or on our, our access points. So, what we've had to do is create two lanes for our Wi-Fi. One is Massey Wireless, which is the fast lane, it's all the school-owned devices. And we have another lane that's Massey Public, and that will take anything, it's still filtered, but it's a slower lane. Well, in the BYOT appliances that we have coming in, we, I saw when we got the survey back, there are a few students saying, Wi-Fi is terrible, I'm thinking, what? We have new Wi-Fi here. I came in, sat in the back of the class, sat behind one boy at a brand-new PC. I said, do you mind if I sit here for a little bit? He said, no, no, not a problem at all. I said, let me just watch what you're doing, and sure enough, his BYOT device and the other BYOT devices in the room were way slower. I was like, oh, boy. And so I went back and talked with Paul Corse, I said, Paul, we've got to make a shift on how we're distributing bandwidth here, and we can do that within a matter of minutes, and we've looked to redistribute so that BYOT devices aren't as slow. And then when we do get the testing time, when it's- And then when we do get the testing time, when it's just school-owned devices, we can shift again. So all the phones don't slow down the entire system as we need the bandwidth for testing." So those are the things we're learning as we're going through this. Loner devices are always needed. We, on average, have about four going out for either, "I forgot to charge my device, I forgot my charger, I forgot the device." It's, those are things that we confront each day. And no matter where we are in the district, we always have to have loners. STEM, Jackie Hallamane, no matter how well BYOT goes, there's always something that happens. You know, "An update didn't happen on my BYOT device," so a loner is needed. So we need to always account for that. The user agreement seems to work well. It seems to do the task so far, you know, and feedback seems to be okay so far in that regard. And as mentioned before, we have collected money for uninsured breakage. So that part of it is working so far as well. So some thoughts moving forward, these are just initial thoughts, that the next step would be to include questions about one-to-one on upcoming school climate surveys. So we could get some more information from students and parents about if we were to do one-to-one in a broader rollout, how many of you would like to use BYOT? Because if it is a third of all students, and we chose to do this in a given grade level, let's take freshman, there's roughly three, three hundred students in freshman class. Okay, so then it would only mean two hundred district devices, because the other hundred would be coming in via BYOT. So it's an important factor in considering how this could, you know, be rolled out moving forward. And then also the surveying with more detailed questions from students and staff. What are their thoughts about one-on-one? And then also teachers and staff too, in terms of professional development needs for any grade level that we would consider using this within. And then budget considerations, the intent would be to do this budget-neutral. If, again, BYOT was a third of the grade level, we need to refresh these devices anyway. We have roughly two thousand Chromebooks within the district. Many of them are older. We started doing this in two thousand twelve. I went back to an old presentation. Our first Chromebooks are from two thousand twelve. They're still in use today. We can see in our logs whether or not they're used each day in the district. They're still being used like any other. So it's pretty amazing when you consider that even back then, they were two hundred and eighty dollars. Now we can get them with the district licensing that we need for about two hundred and twenty-five bucks. So these cheap devices, they work. And they work for five years. The teacher laptops that we have to refresh, which are, you know, roughly three to four times more, last about the same amount of time, about five years. That's general rule of thumb for portable devices, about five years' time. So even though these are low cost, five years is a pretty good duration. So within that refreshment cycle, we have to refresh anyway. If we could work that into a one-to-one cycle, there could be some benefits in that. It's a predictable cycle if they came in with freshmen. And if parents chose to pay for insurance each year, they've added up two hundred bucks. And then, you know, the device may be something where the board might choose that the device then leaves if they, if everybody chose to buy insurance for four years, is something to consider. So we're going to continue to get more information about some of these scenarios to be able to share that with you, to be able to make decisions about whether or not we expand on this as we move forward. And in regards to feedback, Ian Lowell's also here, one of our department chairmen, within the two disciplines that are in the American Studies class. And we've talked with Mike Crowley and Ian and Jamie and Tracy about setting up a time with students and the teachers to talk directly with you as board members about their experience with one-to-one. And that would be the February fifth Board of Ed meeting, so we can continue this dialogue and continue sharing with you feedback about this experience within American Studies.
One-to-one was with which students, just high school?
This is, we're, we're doing this right now just with the American Studies class.
At the high school level?
At the high school level, thank you. Yeah, juniors, yep, just juniors.
Hey, how, how much are they now currently?
Right now, if we just buy one or two, two hundred and twenty-five bucks. If it's larger volume, we could most likely get that, it's still cheaper.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
A comment and a question, I heard a comment when we did the walkthroughs at Stepney. But Jackie Hallow specifically, I remember being in that classroom, I was with John, and the mix. And I enjoyed seeing that, because you would think with, you know, with that generation of, that everybody would be on the technology. But the students that said, you know, some were like, "My tech now, you know, I use my laptop," or "I use it," others were using the textbook. So being able to have that flexibility, I think the convenience of the technology is great, because they can do their, when they don't have the textbook at home. So I appreciate that. Are you seeing a trend between the middle school and the high school? Are the middle schoolers using, you know, versus the high schoolers?
You know, the trend that I think we've seen overall is a definite increase in the amount of use. Our carts every day, is it fair to say they're always out? Those two thousand devices, as I look at the logs on usage, it will show the date that every device was last used. It's, it's nearly ninety percent of the time for all two thousand devices, it's the last day. So they're in constant use. And then one of the charts that was shared last year was the number of files created by our students and staff in district. We're approaching about a million files being created. So again, another, another point that really shows there's a lot of use going on using the technology for instruction.
I don't think we'd ever be able to talk about one-to-one if the cost of these machines weren't so low. And that's allowing us to even have this conversation. And it, the devices work great for kids, because we use the Google apps. Nobody has to worry about having Microsoft Office or Word on the computer. So it's really been, I, I think, a win for all of us.
So that was a good question I was going to ask, was the Chrome BYOT, no issues with compatibility or anything like that? Any, any devices that the kids are bringing in from home?
Yeah, I mean, the crazy thing that's happened along with the Chromebooks is that the app's environment runs on a browser. So it really doesn't matter. It doesn't care about operating systems. The other piece I'll share with you too, this is literally, no exaggeration, this is a Chromebook I use every day for everything from observations. And this one's a little bit better than the student ones, because it has a touchscreen. But in terms of processing, it's no more. And this thing gets me through everything I need to do every day. It's not slow, it runs fast, it does anything and everything, from all the Rule Twenty-Seven stuff to all the web work, to you name it, it does everything. So if it works for me every day, you know, in the classrooms, it certainly can do the things we need to do.
And I think when Jackie Hallow has their tech day in the summer, you know, parents will ask about, "Should we buy a Mac, you know, an iPad?" And I think that Jackie Hallow, although not telling them what to buy, is saying, "This does everything you need to do at two hundred and seventy-five dollars," as opposed to... And we've had some issues with the Apple's printing, right?
The Apples are the toughest one for, toughest ones for us to support.
Apple print, they need, a lot of kids probably get iPads too.
They do.
There's no physical keyboard with that, right?
Right, the iPads are the toughest. And if you ask teachers, the least favorite for that very reason. Then you have to get into Bluetooth and syncing, and things happen with the keyboard and the iPad. They can't with students.
So is the thought, Jack, to drive more kids to BYOT?
I think if we could find, I think the perfect scenario would be if all the pieces came together and we had enough devices to ensure that they were always available for testing. Because within testing, we're not allowed to use BYOT currently. It has to be a district-owned device.
For the S-BAC.
For the S-BAC. And we anticipate for the science testing, but we don't know for sure. And probably the S-A-T within the foreseeable future. For security reasons, they don't, they won't allow anything other than district. So it's, number one, do we have enough in the refresh cycle to, let's say, outfit a grade level? Let's say next year, we could outfit the freshman class with district devices and BYOT. Everybody's covered. And then the balance of the devices in the school are not, are enough to cover a grade level for testing at any one point and provide the ongoing access. If we did that each year, budget-neutral, we could potentially have this, this rotation, freshman year, then they keep it going into sophomore year. We buy new devices for freshmen, and we continue that so that it becomes a predictable exchange of devices over time while still covering all the needs that we have each day.
And we're looking at the budget to make sure, before we even present that to you guys, to make sure that that's something that we can do, that we do have enough devices for testing and for the carts and that kind of thing. So, you know, Jack's been doing a lot of work on that, and we'll bring it to you with the information that we have, so you'll be able to make a decision.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions for Jack on this? Hearing none, then we will move on to my presentation. And Gabby is going to give us a presentation on the budget-building process.
We're in the midst of building our budget, so this is really fresh in all of our mind. But we thought we'd share with you exactly what we're doing, that we started in October, exactly what we're doing, so that you can see the process.
So this is part of your professional development series, and it's budget building. Thanks, Jack. And here's the timeline. So as you all know, we started this back in September. And John, Jack, and I have now begun meeting with other directors. We're soon going to get, and some of the principals already we've met with. We met with elementary on Friday. Today, we met with Sheila and talked about curriculum and human resources. We met with Paul Course and Jack last week also to talk about technology. And the BYOT was part of that conversation as well. And now we're going to be rolling into special ed, the high school. Thank you, athletic ball, it's part of the high school athletics. And then all the fun stuff that I get to do. And then, then, then you know the timeline. Then we bring it to you guys on December fourth. And you have it for a few weeks, and then we come back after break. You vote on the budget. It goes to the town. The first selectman then has the ability to reduce it or increase it if he so desires. And then he presents his budget, the joint town and Board of Ed budget to Town Council on February eighth. And then it goes to the Board of Finance. And then the Board of Finance, by March twenty-first, per the charter, has to set a mill rate. And then we all get to vote on it on the first Tuesday in April. It is the most aggressive budget timeline in the state. We are, we are, we are the first town out. And it's also probably the lengthiest budget process in the state. You have other towns that are starting to talk about their budget, but they don't go to referendum until much later, you know, usually end of April, if not even May. So we're, we're early. So it makes it interesting. So parts of the budget, and how do we build it? You know, one of the first things we look at is the payroll budget. Obviously, we have to look at every single employee we have in the district. And if they're on union contracts, those contracts are then rolled forward. If it's the teacher's contract, we know that's going to be out there for two more years. And staff, G-W-Y, custodial, secretary, paras, librarians, everybody. We do have one contract that has to be negotiated this year. The nurse's contract is up in June. So we have to estimate what we would do with that contract. But other than that, you know, every other contract is in place for the next several years. And then unaffiliated employees tend to follow, usually the teacher's, maybe the secretary's contract, or the administrators, depending on the, the job and the function that they have. We work with human resources to make sure that every single employee is captured. The last thing I like is to sit in a meeting with, with all my colleagues and have someone go, "Hey, you missed Mrs. Smith. Where's Mrs. Smith?" And then I look very foolish when I forgot a teacher who was potentially, you know, a hundred thousand dollar salary or something. So we, we all work together on that. We look at utilities. We have to look at electrical, electricity, natural gas, oil, propane, water. We're in a consortium for electrical rates. It includes the town of Monroe, it includes Westport, it includes Fairfield, it includes Trumbull. It was actually developed by Fairfield several years ago. Fairfield is in a very neat position where they have a purchasing manager for the town and the Board of Ed. So the woman that was in that role several years ago pulled this consortium together. We are currently locked into our electrical rates through June of two thousand twenty-two, which makes budgeting for kilowatt-hours very easy. One thing it doesn't do is it doesn't lock in the delivery charges. And I don't know if you've seen the news, but both Eversource and UI have asked for increases in their delivery charges. We won't know if they're going to get those, but usually the state kind of goes, "Oh, okay, yes, you should get more for delivery." So I'm going to have to, I've already done the electrical, the electricity budget, but I think I have to kind of increase the delivery charges on that, unfortunately. Natural gas, we currently have a contract. That expires in December of two thousand eighteen. In speaking to some people, I think it's going to be better to let that float. It seems that it's a little bit cheaper if we let it float rather than locking in right now. Oil is an annual basis. Right now, we only have one building that is on oil heat, and that's Stepney Elementary. And there's absolutely, well, I don't want to say there's no chance, but the chances of converting Stepney to natural gas anytime soon are pretty slim, as there is no natural gas anywhere on Old Newtown Road at this time. So they would have to run up Old Newtown Road. And that would be, it would be cost prohibitive for us to pay for that. And I just don't see Eversource doing that out of the graciousness of their hearts. So as we look at estimated usage, usage based on the past three years, we have a pretty good handle on our usage right now. The Huntingwell Project actually kind of smoothed out our use for electricity, so that's been nice. And as I mentioned, we're locked in through, locked in rates. Transportation, as you know, the All-Star contract was re-approved last spring for five years. So we know our contracted rates for transportation, for buses. And the way we build that budget is we look at how many buses are out on the road, what, where they're going, what tier they run. And as you know, we have three tiers. We have high school, middle, Monroe L., and then elementary. And we work with special ed also, in case there's any changes to programming. For example, for this year, they instituted a half-day pre-K. So that adds a cost to the budget. Because if you suddenly, if you now are transporting pre-K kids in the middle of the day, that's a, it's outside the normal tiers of busing. So it added a slight cost. It wasn't anything outrageous. And then charters and athletics are budgeted by the athletic department and by the schools. So for example, if a school, you know, they're, the fifth graders are going to Sturbridge Village, the elementaries will budget that in their own budgets. And then John DeGennaro does the athletic budget on transportation. And Jack Ceccholini will do the athletic piece for Jackie Hallow, for the middle school. Special education, I don't want to steal Case Thunder when it comes to budgeting, but we do work collaboratively on this. We collect information on student programming. We, you know, she looks at if those students will still be in district or meet the age requirements for programming, if they're a high-cost programming-type thing, if they meet excess cost. Will they still be here? Is there a chance that they might be coming back into the district rather than being outplaced? Will they be graduating? Will they be moving on to a, and I just lost the term in my head? What's the bridge program, when they're eighteen? Transition, thank you. Or are they moving into a transition program? So we, we go through all that. We estimate tuition increases, because most of the outplaced programs will not give us tuition increases until, you know, the May-June timeframe. As John mentioned earlier, CS has been kind of nice, because they actually have been relatively stable with their tuition. Not, I can't say the same for some of the others. Some of them are pretty expensive. So, and we also look at who's moving in, into the district. Like if we have knowledge of a family that may be coming in, if we know of a preschooler that may be moving from preschool into kindergarten and may or may not need to be outplaced. So all that gets built into the budget. Jack? It's not, thank you. All right, school-based costs. So the principals are the ones who budget for things such as classroom library books, library books in general. They have very little discretionary spending. We looked at it, I believe it was last Friday. I think Stepney has about sixty thousand dollars that Bruce controls. And that's it. So we, we can't really beat up the principals to stop spending money, because it's practically, it's not even a percent of the budget that they have. So you can't, you can't really get upset at the principals. And each school has their own needs. So within that, you know, forty to sixty thousand dollars that they have, somebody may be budgeting for library books, and somebody may be budgeting for, I don't even know, something else. So, and you can't really say, "Oh, well, how come Stepney's buying this and Monroe L. is buying that?" Each year is a different need, and the principals have a really good handle on what their, what their students need, what their teachers need. And those budgets are built based on input from secondary instructional leaders, teachers, administrators, superintendent's office, and also from you guys, don't forget. Insurance, this is the big one this year, has been for a couple of years. So as you know, different things affect insurance, the cost of claims, the cost of care, and the potential of moving carriers. You know, do we bid out stop-loss again this year? Do we bid out our carrier this year? Do we stay with Cigna, do we move someplace else? Sorry, John. But that all goes into it, because there is that potential that if you bid out your insurance, you may be able to lower your rates, and you may be able to save a little bit of money. We look at the claim trends for the past couple of years. As you know, our claims up until this- As you know, our claims up until this past year have trended very, very favorably. You know, we're in an 18-month cycle that's been just, it's been awful. But from what everyone says, and from what we've all seen in the past, it should not last. And it feel, it's, looking at our claims that have come in, it seems to be calming down a little bit. I'm hoping it stays that way, and it's not an anomaly. And again, we look at the cyclical nature of our claims. Is that me, or was that you? That was you. Okay. So again, we review active claims with Brown &amp; Brown and Cigna. As we mentioned, they're going to be coming in on Wednesday to look at utilization. That, again, will help us in building the budget. Now, do we need to add to the medical insurance budget to increase the reserve? I honestly don't know the answer to that. I know John has a number in his head. I have a slightly different number in my head, but it's okay. So, and that's part of it.
Brown &amp; Brown really helps us with that.
Yes.
They're very good at that.
Yeah.
And they will help us to determine what we need to do.
And another key factor is insurance companies will not lock in the renewal rates until May, April, May. So we're, again, we're really out, far out ahead of the curve here. Insurance companies like to look at current-year trends. Well, we're still living the current year, so they don't have any really good grasp of how to develop a budget for what our costs will be, because we're nowhere near the end of the year, and we don't know what could happen in the next six months. So internally, what do we do? Internally, we review it multiple times on a line-item basis. It's in the superintendent's office. We look at it at the director level, and then, as an entire administrative team, we review the budget. We look at employee-level detail. As I mentioned before, you know, the last thing I want to do is miss an employee. You know, I want to make sure they're in the right place. I want to make sure that they're supposed to be teaching fifth grade and not fourth grade. And this is why it's really important for finance to work with HR, to make sure that we've captured everybody in the right spot. Again, who is buying what and why? You know, why is one school buying chairs and the other one's not buying any? It depends on how people are using the chairs, I guess. But again, that's up to the principal. They have a really good grasp of what goes on in their buildings. Athletic participation rates, you know, we always look at these. This is always a big conversation. Can we reduce pay to play? That's just out there. It's not, I'm not saying we are or we aren't. It's just, you know, that's always a conversation that we have. And are we meeting all the needs of all the student athletes? You know, there's always, you know, "Oh, what about hockey? You know, should they do this? What about football? What about soccer? What about lacrosse?" So we want to make sure everything's equitable across the board. You know, again, special ed costs. Are they reasonable? Can we bring programs back into the district? Can we share transportation with other districts for outplacements? This is what we were talking about with other finance directors at CES a couple of weeks ago. It's also what John mentioned that Kay is doing and looking at in advance for using potentially another transportation company. And the ongoing review of caseloads and service hours, and are we doing enough for our staff with ongoing professional development? You know, Sheila had to cut a lot of PD out of the budget for this current year, and we feel that it's really important for our staff to be up to the minute and have really good professional development, so they can actively and, you know, teach our students. And finally, putting it all together. The budget book is built simultaneously. All the sections relate to one another. They all come out of the 1983 accounts that we have, and they all get combined and sliced and diced in various formats for you to see. There's multiple edits. The budget book in its current format was awarded the best budget book by CAE. I think a couple of you have seen the little plaque that we got, kind of like that. It's publicly shared. You know, we put it out on the website right in time for that December 4th meeting, and then, as it gets updated, the updates are included. You know, we got a little bit of flack last year for transparency, and I don't know, I haven't heard that it's not transparent, so if you guys feel that something else should be done differently, you know, we're always open to suggestions to make it better.
What was the flack we received? What was that?
It was one citizen who thought it wasn't as transparent as it could be.
You know, different districts have different ways of doing their budget book. It depends on what their boards and what their citizens want, and what they're comfortable with. And our district has chosen to do it the way we do it, whereas, I don't know, Trumbull probably does it really differently. I have no idea. I've never actually looked at Trumbull's budget book. So I think you do what you're comfortable with and what you're comfortable with, and if it tells the story that you want it to tell, then that's what.
After our meetings, the workshop meetings, on each section, it goes online, so people can see it right away after you, once we present it to you. And it's done by items, and you can get it by transportation, you can get it by schools and...
I got to say that since Academy's been in her role, she's included actuals for current-year spending, which is really helpful, I think, in building the next year's budget. That wasn't available to us in the past, so we really didn't have an idea of where we stood at any point in the year, especially when we were making the budget. So to have that available to us, to put that out there and be transparent with that, I think speaks volumes for our process.
And it helps us build the budget when we're sitting with the principals. And you know, sometimes, we do, you know, we look at one thing, and you'll see a 100% decrease and then a 100% increase on the other, because we're trying to true-up. We're trying to make sure, and every year, we find a few of those, you know? We have to true-up. So it's something that we wanted to...
Shifting line items.
Shifting the line items and going from there. So, yeah, it's a process. You know, Jim was really good with all of us working on it together, so it's not like this is a new process for us. We've been doing it for the last five years, so we're pretty comfortable with that. And we do go line by line, and that is true. We sit there and go line by line, and there are times we bring the principals in the room, and we sit there and say, "Okay, are we missing something? Let's look and see if we can find something." So it's a good process, it's a long process, it's early. It's a early process.
It's really early.
But, you know, when we're done, we're confident with our budget, so that we can talk about it and present it to anybody.
One more question on discretionary spending. So you had mentioned around the principals. Any thought to cascading some of the spending down to the principal level and giving them some more discretion in terms of what they need at their schools, rather than, you know, that top-down approach with everything?
I think, I think the problem, I mean, John, do you want to say anything?
I think we're going to say the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is so much of our budget is set with things such as salaries, benefits, the utilities, transportation, contracted services.
That's all that fixed expense, right?
Well, they're not, it's not, they're sort of fixed, but they're fixed to an extent. They're fixed to the best of our ability to estimate them. I mean, transportation is fixed in terms of, we know we're going, we're pretty sure, we're pretty confident we're going to run X number of buses, just like we did this year, at this dollar value. You know, things like electricity, yes, there's a fixed cost to the kilowatt hour. The variable there is how many hours are you going to use, and you really hope you don't use more than last year. You want to kind of keep it consistent. And obviously, this year, the delivery charge is going to be a little bit of a variable. So I think discretionary is really the stuff that the principals absolutely can control, as opposed to, yes, they're involved in the hiring process, but they have not, they can't say anything about how much to pay somebody.
So I think what we're saying is the discretion, we are giving them control over all the discretionary that we, or as much of discretion as we think we can. But here's an example. We met with the elementary principals, and we have, we budgeted for substitutes. And they're saying, "We'd like to hire more permanent substitutes, because we're having a hard time finding substitutes. They're coming in late, and we're not getting them. So can we hire another permanent substitute and take it out of our daily substitute account?" Now, that wasn't a discretionary account that they ever could touch before, but through our conversations, we said, "No, that makes some sense." This was the elementary principals. "That makes some sense. Let's do that." So you're finding that it will be more effective for in the classroom, it'd be more consistency, so that's one of the things that we changed. So there are some things that we never thought were discretionary, but when they come and meet with us and talk about it, it makes some sense. So we're doing that. But... You know, one other piece I'd like to add, too, is that we have discussions together as a group, because we are a district. So, for example, this one-to-one presentation was shared with secondary principals, so that it's not done autocratically, it's done together. With the elementary principals' conversation, we have three elementary schools. The intent is to pursue similar outcomes, so students come to any one building, they get a good district experience. It's not the experience at Building A as opposed to Building B. So within that, we had conversations about how best to use staff, but the decision that was derived in that conversation was one decision that the elementary principals and John and I were comfortable with, rather than different decisions that led to different outcomes. Is that what you mean by discretionary when we're talking about that?
Well, I think that there's expenses, or there's budget that's best held at the district level. But then, when you look at each of the individual schools, we entrust in our principals there to make decisions locally at that school in terms of what that school needs. And I'm not talking in that sense about staffing necessarily, but more about what's there and what do they need in terms of supplies, or equipment, or IT, or whatnot. And maybe that's, those decisions are best left to those principals. Just a thought.
You know, it's something that we can look at. You know, we do budget for technology hardware centrally, you know, central office, with the conversations, but maybe we can look at, you know, is, can that be more of the principals making some decisions that way? So I think it's always good to have that conversation.
Anybody have any, anything else, questions or suggestions? All right. Hearing none, then we will move on to all business. We have a policy, a second review, and our vote anticipated on policy 6146, which is graduating requirements. Do I have a motion to approve this policy? Thanks, Jerry. Second. Jim, thank you so much. George, do you want to go over anything?
Nothing additional. It's just around students being able to be certified in, by literal literacy, and having that part of their resume.
Perfect. Anybody have anything, discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to new business. First up is a curriculum proposal for first review, and this is instructional materials and resource proposal for history/social studies child development course for grades 10 to 12.
And we have Ian Lowell, the second instructional leader, and Jamie Sherry, the teacher of the class, to come and talk about the book.
Okay, I'll see you. So thank you. As you know, we're trying to incorporate more nonfiction texts into all the curriculum, K-12, and so Jamie brought to my attention the child development class, which is an elective class here at the school. It's a year-long course. It's grown in popularity. The only issue with it is the textbook's getting a little bit older. And although it's still valid, we also know the textbooks aren't exactly page turners. So we're looking for a complimentary resource here to engage kids and to really update the curriculum, to give it a little bit fresher life, and also for something that the kids can really dig into and find engaging. And so, a couple of years back, the administrative team read Brain Rules by John Medina. I don't know if some of you may be familiar with that book. And it gives a list of 10 things that, how to improve learning, and it was really helpful for us as an administrative team to bring back to the classroom to think of different techniques to use. And these brain rules are for babies. Brain rules for babies. So it's a whole process in the child development curriculum, and I'm going to turn it over to Jamie, because she's really the expert here, who can speak more to it.
Yeah, I was just looking for something to reengage the students and bring in newer research. So the textbook, obviously, is dated, so it doesn't have that new brain research, new psychology research that we're trying to infuse into the curriculum. And what I really liked about this book is it really parallels the curriculum we have for the course. So there's a chapter about pregnancy, which is the first unit that we study, and it brings in ideas about teratogens and food safety, which are things that we look at. It goes into infancy and talks about, you know, intelligence, and it brings up cognitive functioning and Piaget. So we talk about that, you know, like, it parallels all the things, the units we talk about in the course, but with newer information, newer resources. And it's written at a level that students are able to read and also able to gain interest in, because it's kind of presenting things as like myths, or, you know, questions that are controversial that you can talk about as like a discussion in class. So I really liked this book for the course.
It also has a website, additional website with short video clips. He's kind of an engaging guy, Medina himself, so it's got little clips of him making complex psychological terms more practical and, I don't know, understandable, I guess, if that's uncomfortable.
Yeah, when Jamie brought that to the curriculum council, we saw a couple of the videos. They're pretty engaging and kind of funny to watch, and I think it gets the kids a lot.
Is this research-based?
He does, yeah. He's a research-based psychologist, and he mixes both, like, personal stories and research. So it's not all scientific, but it comes from a scientific perspective. He's a neuro, I believe, neuroscientist.
How to raise cognition scores by 50%?
So he, that's one of like the, you know, like, he talks about when, like, there's these myths about what you can do. So like, the whole movement for those Einstein videos, like, that's not a way to, you know, raise your kid's score. So he kind of talks about what's out there and what's been proven and disproven with more recent studies.
What's, I mean, how would you do that, raise your cognition scores by 50%?
So he talks about things like nurturing children and working with them on emotional learning and things that, like, you wouldn't necessarily look at. It's not like flashcard memorization, like, there's other ways to raise a cognitively adaptive child.
Anybody have any other questions?
This course, because it's, do you have, had the opportunity to have any guest speakers as well?
We have had some guest speakers. We've had some pregnancy stories, some preschool experiences with preschool teachers. I mean, I'm always open to guest speakers, because I think that it's such a career and real-life type of situation.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
We did go to preschool as a field trip last year in Bridgeport, and it was really great for the students. We had made children's books based on learning developmental ideas about like what preschool children would be able to read, and then they got to read them at the preschool to the children. So it was really kind of hands-on learning for the students.
This is the course that, at one time, when we had the Early Childhood Center here en masse, it was involved with that as kind of a program. But now that that program is housed at Trail Hollow, it's not really as easy.
Have you looked or talked to anybody up in Yale? Because they have a whole infant cognition center. My five-year-old, since she's been six months old, goes there once a month and still does it, even though she's five, because they move up to the different labs, where they do different, you know, different games and different, like, puppet show, and kind of gauge and understand how babies and young children's brains work. And, you know, they do that for their studies, the graduate students. It may be a good research to talk to them, because some of the studies that they have done over the past five years that we've been involved with is kind of amazing, you know, trying to figure out how children think at that young age. Like, some of the studies, you know, they have a puppet show, and you have a good puppet that does a good thing, and you have one that does the bad thing, and then they try to see which the baby goes for, if they want the one that's good or the one that's bad. But, you know, they have, it gets more complex as the, you know, years go on. So like, now, it's more like multitasking and see if she can remember things at a multitasking, you know, environment. But, you know, you may want to partner with them and try to get some of their stuff that they've been doing.
I actually have a former graduate student who was in my AP Psychology class probably five years ago, and she's working as a graduate student at the Yale Lab. So I am in contact with her. We're working on seeing if she can come in or if we can go there.
Great.
But I'm working on that, yeah.
Perfect.
Just, I'm just curious, what's the male, female they share in this class?
It's, I think it's 26 to 1.
Oh, no way.
We need more, we need more boys in here.
I completely agree.
We had a couple left.
Yeah, it's about one to two every year. You know, I would love to have more male enrollment, and I'm hoping that, you know, as the course, you know, keeps going, becomes popular, the male enrollment will increase.
We've had as high as, we've had as high as two sections a year. We have a very full, like, 27, 27 students this year. It's... Yeah, I think it's an important, it's an important class. I think it's, you know, I think we don't have sometimes enough of the, this type of classes, you know, we're still focused on, and then we forget about some of these important topics, so, yeah. And then we forget about some of these important topics, so, yeah. Many of us are going to be parents, huh? That's it, that's it.
Ian, if we approve this, the cost to us is?
Excellent question. Jamie, you?
So one of the things I did in addition to putting this together for you is I applied to the Weller Grant. So they were gracious enough to give us a grant that fully funds the books for the course.
Zero.
So the course is zero.
Always like to hear that.
Yeah, I mean, Jamie just didn't want to present a book. She wanted to see if she could get some money for it, so we always appreciate that.
Anybody else have any other questions? All right, this will be on our agenda next meeting for a vote on this.
Jamie, thank you.
Thank you.
You can leave the copies.
Yeah, you can leave them.
Um, do we need to keep these for next time or?
No.
No, well, I don't want to not have you have this. Thank you, thank you.
All right, next up is our first international field trip request since we reinstated, you know, field trips internationally, so.
Julia is going to come up as a representative of the music department to talk about this international field trip. I do want to say though, that Jack Zammery, Joe Cobson and I attended a cave workshop three weeks ago on field trips. If we were nervous about having international field trips before, we are clearly nervous now. But anyway, what they did, they talked about ways for us to minimize some of our liability. So Julia has incorporated all that, she's going to talk about that with you. But, you know, really the workshop basically said, you know, these are really good programs for kids, we want kids to be able to take advantage of those. But we want districts to be able to minimize the risk for kids. So parents understand what that's all about and also ways to help limit liability. So Julia's going to talk about all that stuff.
Sure. And do you have a copy of the trip itinerary?
Yes.
Excuse my cold. As passionate as I am about trying to enable this opportunity for our students, I'm equally attentive to the safety of the whole program and of not wanting to do anything that would make John nervous. So it's, it's been well researched and I welcome your questions. To give you a little overview of this trip, the music department at Massach has a history of international travel, often to sites to perform the classics. We have never traveled as a whole department internationally. And that's primarily because the issue of forming instrumentation, especially for band, can be difficult. It's hard to get together a large enough ensemble that's traveling internationally to play the pieces that the band director would select. And so it's much easier with choir to organize a group that can travel. So this, this trip, we gave the World Strides people the directive that we wanted to be able to travel with whatever instrumentation or voice parts we're going to participate. We've had a lot of frankly, pressure from families wanting this international trip. But in these times, both financially and globally, we're not, we're not sure what the numbers would be. So we wanted to be able to have a trip that would be good for whatever instrumentation traveled. And so this festival that we're joining is unlike any that we've done before. We're not bringing our concert repertoire and singing on the steps of the palace. Or we're joining a global group. So the music will be sent in advance and all the different groups, different ensembles in their home countries will rehearse. And then when we get there, then guest conductors from different countries will be leading these massive rehearsals. And students will be performing with kids from different schools around the world. So if we don't have a bassoon going with us or if we have all the flutes and not saxes, we'll be joining a larger ensemble. So that part will be handled for us, which we really appreciate. Also, we asked, we asked, where's the least worrisome place we could go as we're proposing this for the first time? And Iceland was up at the top of the list. Iceland is a plane ride away, it's about as far, it's a little longer of a trip than traveling to Denver, like more like traveling to Phoenix. Iceland, I learned, is about the size of Connecticut and Massachusetts put together. Overlaps a little, maybe throw in Rhode Island. And it's one-tenth the population of Connecticut. So it's a small country. And there are no travel advisories to Iceland from the State Department. And one of the things we learned in terms of safety and security is, is to monitor both the CDC, the Center for Disease Control website, for any travel advisories like Zika or anything like that. Or, and also the State Department travel advisories more related to political activity or acts of war, anything like that. And so Iceland had pretty extremely high marks in both those areas. And we learned that we keep an ongoing link available to families. And we make sure, to be clear right up front, you know, we advise families to stay updated and we will, of course, pass the information. And the third thing was that we wanted to make sure there's a cultural and sightseeing component to it. And so we've learned, we've learned that Iceland is geographically a really unique place for kids to see and learn about. And we have a lot of cultural access in this trip. There will, in addition to the performing in the Eldberg Hall, which is the home of the National Symphony, they also get to do a partner performance with a local high school, which will be probably in the cathedral. We don't have that location for performance yet, so. That brings us here.
When would the trip be?
We are planning the trip for spring break of 2019. The successful cycle that we found was to present a trip in the fall of one school year and start a monthly payment plan for families over fifteen months to travel the following year. For this reason, we usually end up offering the trip this year to the whole, to the students of all four grades. And then we would end up traveling with grades ten, eleven and twelve. Talking to Madam Chair, I know there's at least one eighth grade family that would be willing to sign on for their child. So we would be willing to look at that. We did offer Germany to the eighth grade families, but we didn't have any eighth grade families sign on to Germany. And I think they just picturing international travel for their eighth graders was not. But maybe you'll lead the way.
We'll lead the way because I'm sure mine is going to be like, I want to go.
Yeah. One thing we added this year to the trip contract is we made the trip insurance mandatory. And that's per the board's, that new sixty-one fifty-three policy. And I put it in there just for you to take a look at it against our contract as you're reviewing. The standard trip coverage, like the general travel insurance is a hundred and forty-nine dollars. We're going with the more expensive policy, it's called the cancel for any reason. And the reason that's an important difference is because the basic travel insurance is if the trip gets canceled, that you get, that you get your money refunded. For the more expensive rate, if the person decides not to go, then they get, they have a coverage for a refund. It's only seventy-five percent. But it would, it would address the concerns we had in years past when we were contemplating, is the, is the board going to send the trip or not based on the events in a certain country or something like that? From the travel company's perspective, they don't make a contract with the Board of Education. It's with the individual travelers. So the cancel for any reason benefit would be activated if the board was to not send the trip.
And part of the policy is you, the board can make a decision, the administration can make a decision that it's not the right time to go. And parents have to understand that that's a risk that they can take.
And you said they'd only receive how much back from it? Seventy-five percent?
Yeah, so you could be on the hook for sort of nine hundred dollars.
Gotcha.
We haven't talked about this with families yet, but that would be part of the parent meeting is to say, this is the outside risk that you would be taking financially.
And it was very stressful for Jim and I when that was going on two years ago with the whole issues and deciding, do we send it, do we not send it?
The money involved?
The money involved, the concern about the money involved, I mean, and then the concern about, oh gosh, I hope something doesn't happen. And like, I had a child on the trip too. And keeping you up at night because it's just not your child you're making a decision for. It was lots of different children and on three different trips and so.
And everybody had a different thought.
And everybody had a different thought.
And not everybody had purchased the insurance policy. And we didn't, you know, I would say our trip travel practices have evolved over time. And back then, we didn't require the travel insurance. So with this new.
It needs to be.
Instruction, it just makes it right up front. Yeah, Jerry.
A few things. When do we have to approve this to get the price locked in? Like you have a price here.
Yeah.
How long do we have to keep the price locked into what it is?
Well, the, the price that we were quoted at three thousand ninety-nine expires like Friday or something like that. But our guy Ken, who's the one who at World Strides has been doing all these tours, got a call from us last week, it said it's coming up for the board. We would expect them to review it and then the next meeting is a couple more weeks.
Two weeks from tonight.
I said, we would, we would need until then. And he said, okay, fine. So I don't think they would hold this into the winter for us. But he's aware of the cycle that we work on. And he also knows that we're going out for the first time since coming back to this. So whatever questions the board has, we'll take the time to do the research.
Howard, sorry.
Reviews, well, I'm sorry.
It sounds like a great opportunity. I was just wondering about, what about the kids who really want to go? But there's no way they can afford it. Is there any?
We do have some people in that situation. And that is one of the things that we think deeply about, and offering an expensive option. You know, we don't want to privatize public school. And yet we still want to offer these amazing experiences. And so we take that to heart. And the way this festival works, all the music's coming to us. So the rep for this trip is going to be our spring concerts. So in our spring concert season, the students will all play this music. The ones who play it in Iceland will have more time to play it. But it'll be something that we all work on together. The other piece is that we decided as a department, instead of doing all these separate trips, we're going to look to do something like this once every three years so that every student would have the opportunity once in high school to travel. And then we have a smaller trip in the off years. So this spring, we're traveling to DC for clinics at George Washington University. That's a three-day trip, it's cost about four hundred dollars. That didn't come to the board because it's not international, that went through John for approval. So students who are, you know, interested in some more local travel, there is a smaller trip offered in the off years. But the.
But there's no scholarships or anything for the picture?
But there is financial aid.
Well, the nice thing about this company is it doesn't, it doesn't bring down the cost for everybody. But this company does have a scholarship program, which we're really excited about. We haven't traveled with a company this large in any of the other travel series. But for families with an adjusted family income less than eighty-five thousand dollars, they can apply for financial assistance through World Strides. We don't offer scholarships through the music department for this kind of travel, but this is a way to bring it into reach for some people. But that is something that, that is, anytime we offer one of these extra things, that is something that we take to heart.
The kids that can afford it go, you know.
Yeah, and we haven't, we haven't solved that one.
So that was my question though about, is this the first time we've traveled with World Strides?
No, World Strides, we've been with them several times. Yep, they, they're sort of our, our regular Italy trip.
Yes.
And they also did a Germany trip for us a couple of years ago. But that one was really customized. And having, so our music department's three staff. It's Mike Ansis in band, Margaret Schauw in choir. Mike's new to international travel with the group. Margaret's gone to Italy with choir a couple of times. And Lisa Holman, who's from Germany, took the string orchestra to Germany. And she really customized that trip. It was going to her homeland, it was performing in her local halls and things like that. So she really did a lot of the arrangement for that trip. But it was still under the auspices of World Stride. So we've traveled with them now several times.
And Lisa said to, when we had the meeting, that she was going to go to Iceland this summer so she can see some of the places that we could visit. She's very dedicated to this. She thinks that the, you know, this traveling and this experience is really important to kids. So she's going to go this summer to see where the kids will be.
I wish I had numbers data for you on this. I really have qualitative information about the value of this international travel. But it's, it's just made a tremendous impact for kids that have participated.
But we always keep in mind the cost because some kids aren't going to be able to do this.
But this is over a year away. Have you looked at any fundraising at all? I mean, when I was color guard advisor and we traveled the country, I raised money for the color guard at Massach to travel the country.
Yeah.
So, I mean, have you looked into?
We did, we've gone back and forth about fundraising. When we fundraise as a whole department, like the Cannon Bottle Drive on the weekends, we don't like to apply that to a trip where not everybody's going. We like to offset some of the broader costs. And when we tried to do spreadsheets of individual fundraising and how many hours you worked, you saved fifteen dollars and whatnot, we had trouble, we had trouble navigating that. Once we found this company that does the monthly payments, it comes down to about one eighty-six per month. I think I have one eighty-six wrong because we're not going to be starting the payments mid-November because you're not going to be voting on this until after that. But I guess it.
I understand what you mean.
When it was a month, it would go up a little bit. So fifteen months of under two hundred dollars a month is, is what we found the best way to address making it come within reason for folks. There are some kids that it's not a reality for and, and we, we're not great about that. Any other questions?
Anybody?
I have to say, it was really well thought out. You know, in the census was our first trip, Jack and I wanted to meet with Julia and the three directors. And they came in with all the information, they came in with all the answers to all the questions. So I appreciate the work that you've done for this.
My pleasure, my pleasure. I think it's in my blood. I was stashed with my grandmother for a week in nineteen eighty-one because my parents were chaperoning the Massach basketball trip to Sweden. So I've been in support of travel for kids for a long time. But if any other questions come up, I'm happy to, to look into it, to do some research.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
All right, so this will, was the first review. So this will be on our agenda in two weeks to vote yea or nay on proceeding with this, this trip. Does anybody have anything else? Carlos?
I just wanted to say that we don't know what tomorrow will bring. And I just want to say that it's been a pleasure serving on this board because I don't know, again, what tomorrow will bring and, you know, hoping for the best, but, you know.
We have one more meeting left. Hold on, you'll still be here the twentieth. It's okay.
So I just, I just say it's been a pleasure though, you know, sitting with everyone on here. And it's been a learning process for myself. I think we all learned something sitting on a board and so it's been great. So I really appreciate it.
I agree.
Yeah.
I'd agree as well. Alan's probably the only person on the board that's, that's been here longer than us.
Oh, yes. He has been.
Chair has his name in it.
Yeah, right. But I, it's a great board to serve on and a lot of great people here. You know, we all get along well and we do what's best for the community.
Agreed.
Yeah, I wish everybody good luck and hopefully we'll all be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Shannon. Second, Carlos. All right, all in favor? Great, thank you very much, everybody.